Good evening and welcome to the April 24th, 2023, meeting of the Town of Barnstable Planning Board. I will call this meeting to order. My name is Steve Robichaud. This meeting is being held tonight at Barnstable Town Hall, 367 Main Street, Iannis, Mass., in the James H. Crocker Jr. Hearing Room, second floor, this evening at 7:00 PM. The meeting was previously noticed with the town clerk. Application materials may be accessed through the Planning Board website at townofbarnstable.us/boardscommittees/banningplanningboard/default, or by contacting karen.harron@town.barnstable MA.us, or calling 508-862-4064. And at this time, we will call the meeting to order and introduce our board members, starting with Ray.
Good evening, Ray Sexton.
And Bob.
Good evening, Bob Twiss.
And Tim.
Good evening, Tim O'Neill.
And Michael.
Good evening, Michael Messinas.
And staff, we have Karen.
Good evening, Karen Herron, Planning and Development, Principal Assistant.
And Jim.
Good evening, Jim Cupfer, Senior Planner, Planning and Development.
And Kate.
Good evening, Kate Maldonado, Assistant Director, Planning and Development.
Thank you so much, and my name is Steve Robichaud, Chair. Notice of recording, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Channel 18 in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, and I will now inquire whether anyone else is taping this meeting, and if so, please make your presence known. Seeing none, we will continue to our public comment portion of the meeting. This is public comment unrelated to our two agenda items this evening. Our two agenda items this evening are 810 Wakeby and 24 Flume Ave. Again, general public comment unrelated to this evening's agenda items. Seeing none, we will continue to our first item this evening, which is a special permit. Ray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concerns a special permit applied for by TJA Clean Energy, who have submitted an application for a special permit pursuant to the Town of Barnstable zoning ordinance 240-44-2, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic overlay district, for the construction of a large ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation at 810 Wakeby Road, Marstens Mills, Massachusetts, 02648. This is a new public hearing.
Excellent, thank you, Ray. And on these special permit items, five affirmative votes are required to send the matter forward. And at this time, we would open the public hearing, and I'd seek a motion for that.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and a second?
A second.
That was Bob, thank you, Bob. All those in favor, Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. The public hearing is open. This item, I'm going to go over the process that we're going to work through on this item. First, we're going to have a presentation by the applicant. We'll then seek initial board comments and questions. We'll then go to public comment, and then some closing comments with the board, and go from there. So, TJA Solar, Attorney Ford, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, staff, and ladies and gentlemen. Attorney Michael Ford here for the applicant, TJA Solar. With me is Brendan Rialy of Atlantic Design Engineers. They have been the engineers on this project, and are the engineers on the site plan, other plans, and reports that are before the board in support of the application for a special permit that have been filed with your board prior to this night. What I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is just to review a brief history of this project, where it's been, from a regulatory standpoint, and the current status of the various regulatory approvals that the project has been through. So, as this board knows, the process of revising the zoning ordinance to allow this project to come forward took place over a couple-year period, and culminated last year in the council adopting an amendment to the zoning ordinance, which included two steps. One, amending the map to allow this particular location to be included within the overlay district, and then a complete rewrite, if you will, of the overlay district itself, its procedural provisions, and performance standards, and the process by which a large-scale solar array could be permitted within the overlay district. This property is located in a residential zone, RF zoning district, that's the underlying district. So, the overlay district is the genesis for the application for a special permit. The underlying district, obviously not permitting a large-scale solar array, but the overlay district allowing it, but allowing it only by special permit issued by this board, the Planning Board. The site also has the benefit, you may recall, which came up during the course of Planning Board hearings on the proposed zoning change, of a variance that was issued many years ago by the Zoning Board of Appeals, but is still in effect, and that's for salvage yard. It doesn't apply to the entire site, it applies to the front portion of the site, as near as I can tell, in the plans that surround the variance, and they're imperfect at best, in my view, anyway. About five or six acres of the front portion of the site has the benefit of the salvage yard variance. And that is still an active use that is carried on today on the site. Some of you have been to the site in the course of your deliberations on making recommendations to the legislative body, the council, for the overlay district, and had an opportunity to see the current activity that exists on the site. Since the ordinance was adopted by the council, new site plans have been prepared, and we first appeared before the Zoning Board of Appeals under what's called a modification permit under your ordinance, and sought relief on certain of the setback requirements that are in the ordinance for the solar array. That's a process that's unique to the ordinance. It has its genesis in Chapter 40A, Section 3, dealing with exempt uses, and as you're probably aware, a solar array is one of the exempt uses listed in the General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 3. And towns are prohibited under Chapter 40A, Section 3, from simply prohibiting large-scale solar arrays like this particular project, and their ability to regulate them is limited pursuant to the terms and conditions of Chapter 40A, Section 3. But being an exempt use, it qualified for standing for a modification permit to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and after hearing, that board did vote to grant the requested modification, which was twofold. One, on the westerly sideline of the proposed project, where the ordinance requires a 100-foot setback because the westerly side is substantially along the array undeveloped. They granted a waiver down to a minimum of 16 feet for the array. So, that was an exemption to allow up to 84 feet, the 100-foot setback on that side. On the easterly side, the project observes for the solar array the required 150-foot setback from developed residential property, but there is an access road that runs along the perimeter of the easterly side, and you'll hear more about it when Atlantic goes through the special permit criteria. But during the course of site plan review, the Centerville, Osterville, Marstens Mills, Fire District did their review and did their initial recommendations. And they were quite thorough. They required a onsite with Atlantic, where they walked the property, they walked the area of the access road, and it was their professional and considered recommendation that the access road be expanded from what was shown as a 12-foot road to a 20-foot road along the westerly side of the project. That resulted in the access road of 20 feet being in the 150-foot setback. So, it's not a structure, but there is an access roadway, which is simple gravel road, which will provide access to the project for construction initially, maintenance over time, and obviously for the emergency access vehicles, to the extent they need to get out there, either for inspections or a response. And the Board of Appeals also granted that waiver to the extent necessary within the 150-foot buffer, the access road. We also requested that, within that motion, and it was granted as part of that motion, that to the extent the Planning Board determined that the proposed berms, or any of the plantings and screening that we proposed out there, and there is substantial berming and screening that is proposed in order to meet the screening requirements of the bylaw, that to the extent those needed permission to be in the buffer zone, given the language of the buffer zone, which we thought was somewhat ambiguous, the waiver includes that as well. The other thing that, so that's kind of the history of the Zoning Board of Appeals action. The other, and I got ahead of myself a little bit, the other board that we went to was Site Plan Review. That was the first board, actually, and as you know, as members of the Planning Board, Site Plan Review in Barnstable is conducted as an administrative proceeding. The Site Plan Review team is made up of the various department heads of the various disciplines in the town, and Site Plan Review is run under the auspices of the Building Commissioner. And we had several Site Plan Review meetings. The last was continued to give the comm fire officials additional time to do their onsite and make their final determinations with respect to the recommendation of the 20-foot access road. You have in your record a copy of the site plan approval, which is required to have standing to apply for the special permit. It is conditional in that it requires that we obtain the necessary zoning relief, and there are other conditions in there as well, which Atlantic can review with you in detail to the extent necessary. So, finally, the other thing I should mention from a regulatory standpoint, before I turn it over to Brendan, is that the applicants have made an application in the nature of a request for an opinion from the Cape Cod Commission staff with respect to whether the Cape Cod Commission had jurisdiction over the project. Again, a requirement in your local ordinance to show that, to the extent that it's required, Cape Cod Commission approval has been obtained. Cape Cod Commission staff, after reviewing the project, doing an onsite, and reviewing the necessary site plans, made a determination that while this is a change of use of the property, it is not a change of use which, from an impact standpoint, triggers the jurisdiction of the commission. And in that particular determination, they cited a number of factors, some of which were the fact that the site is substantially cleared currently, and so there's limited deforestation that is necessary to construct the solar array on this site. There is an ongoing salvage yard use on the site that's permitted in a portion of the site, and at the end of the day, their determination through the Chief Regulatory Officer, Gordon, Jordan Valenzio, was that no Cape Cod Commission application for a change of use was required. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, what I would like to do is turn it over to Brendan. He does have a slide presentation. He's going to walk you through some of the specific facts regarding the proposal, and then we'll take the time to walk through the special permit criteria and present evidence to you, which we believe will be in support of a positive finding under each of the nine criteria the board must make a finding on, in order to determine whether to grant the special permit. So, with that, maybe I could turn it over to Brendan.
Excellent, thank you. Hear me? Yep. Good evening, my name is Brendan Rialy. I'm from Atlantic Design Engineers, and I'm representing the applicant, TJA Clean Energy. And as Attorney Ford mentioned, I'm going to go through these four topics, just basically give an overview of the existing conditions. I'll briefly go over the approvals that have been pretty much covered by Attorney Ford already, the proposed development and special permit provisions that we believe that we've met. So, as mentioned, the site was previously a sand and gravel quarry. A lot of the work that was previously done on the site cleared existing vegetation, and has created general slopes that sloped towards the center of the property, creating a, basically, a bowl with a higher elevation along the perimeter. Part of our stormwater design was to take advantage of these low areas that were created as part of the sand and gravel quarry and its operations. There are no wetlands on site, is not within priority habitat of rare species or estimated habitats of rare wildlife, NHESP, not within a FEMA flood zone, not within an area of critical environmental concern. The site does lie within a Zone 2 and sole source aquifer. And as you probably know, it is within a zoning district residence F, and the site is approximately 19.3 acres. So, very briefly, the approvals that we have obtained already, the Mass. DEP did a comprehensive site assessment for the property in 2019, which essentially involved them reviewing the site, reviewing necessary cleanup that they had ordered the property owner to do, and soil and downgradient groundwater testing. Results of this testing indicated that there were no contaminants of concern and concentrations that were above their, the standard for that area, which was pretty much the most stringent standard that you can have, seeing that was in a Zone 2. Additionally, we have gone before the Barnstable Concom, and got negative determination of applicability. As Attorney Ford mentioned, Cape Cod Commission has provided us with a no development regional impact review. Federal Aviation Administration determined no hazard to air navigation, and the Site Plan Review and Zoning Board of Appeals modification permits. So, the proposed array is going to be approximately 4.9 megawatts AC, a slight change from the last plan that was shown in Revision 1, which was dated, I believe, Friday. The perimeters, the area within the perimeter security fence has increased slightly to 10.66, as to take into account the 20-foot wide gravel access road. As part of the security fence, there will be, obviously, a security gate, and the fire department will have 24/7 access via a Knox box. As mentioned, there will be minimum tree clearing, seeing that the site is primarily cleared already. The array will utilize two concrete equipment pads, one in the north and one in the south, roughly one up here and one down here. As part of the modification permit, all sound-damening equipment will remain outside the setbacks, so the 150-foot setback from residentially-developed properties and 100 feet from all other property lines. Our stormwater meets Mass. DEP and Town of Barnstable stormwater management standards. We have proposed erosion control along all areas that will need it, especially some of the slopes that will be primarily along the western side. There'll be some steeper slopes that will have erosion control, and will have intermittent throughout the array. We're obviously proposing a vegetative screening that will be in the southern area here. There's more along the eastern side that I'll show on the next slide. Just do want to point out that part of our screening, we are taking advantage of existing vegetation that is all along this property. Can't see it on this slide, maybe possibly the next slide, but these properties right here, the existing houses are at least, this one is the closest, it's at least 300 feet from our property line, and all this area is existing dense vegetation. As mentioned, we do have proposed infiltration basins that will contain and infiltrate up to the 100-year storm, and those are taking advantage of natural low areas. As mentioned, we do have extended vegetative screening along the western, or along the eastern and northern side, and we are utilizing a berm in this area. As far as other key aspects to the design, we do have quite a bit of grading in this area due to the existing steep slopes. We've kept everything at a slope that no riprap should be needed, so all, we'll have to use some type of geotech fabric, but all that area will be able to eventually revegetate, and, you know, and whatever is available will grow back. So, at this time, I just want to go through the aspects of the special permit. As Attorney Ford mentioned, a special permit should be required when a large-scale ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation located in the underlying residential zoning district. Part of that is meeting the requirements of the site plan, which we have gotten approval for. Additionally, as I mentioned, adequate noise measures to contain and suppress noise. All our sound-damening equipment is adhering to the setbacks that were part of the solar amendment. FAA approval, Concom, or Cape Cod Commission approval, that has all been met. Just going some more detail about the screening. The proposed project is going to utilize three different ways of screening our project, and as I mentioned, we're using the existing vegetation along the property boundary in the southeast, where the residential buildings are set back from the property line at least 300 feet. We are also proposing that planting of a double row of coniferous tree species to be along the western, northern, and south, sorry, the eastern, northern, southeastern side. Based on our design right now, we're proposing somewhere around 680 trees. They, as it shows on the plan, they're going to be evergreen. We're proposing that we will have the tree species approved by the town prior to the issuance of the building permit, but we are taking, you know, a typical tree species are natively growing arborvitae's. Those species, there's several that are native to New England, and they can vary in height from 30 to 50 feet. We are going to be proposing typically a tree that would be used for this screening would be a younger tree, maybe four to five feet. We're proposing something that's had a little bit more time to grow, and that would be more in the eight to 10 feet. It will, you know, obviously vary, so we're saying an average of nine feet. But even with eight-feet-tall tree, that will, based on our proposed and existing grades, those trees will exceed the height of our solar panels in all areas that we're proposing the screening, and, you know, they will exceed the height of the adjacent panels to those trees. Additionally, we're proposing the berm, and that will be roughly 20 feet tall, and that will bring it up to an elevation of 90 feet at the top. This will be more than adequate to screen the, in addition to the trees that we're showing on top, it will meet the, the 90 feet will be over the elevation of the immediate adjacent property, and then another nine feet on top of that with the proposed vegetation. So, the next required provision is a full disclosure of all hazardous material. There are no hazardous materials that will permanently be introduced or stored on the site. Temporary hazardous materials include fuel for construction. That has been listed in the Emergency Operations Plan. These are just going to be typical things such as gasoline, diesel, and hydraulic fluid. Also, within the Emergency Operation Plan, we have put instructions for how to handle, transport, and, you know, basically refill the vehicles as needed with those materials. There's no battery storage systems proposed. Our transformers, which there'll be two of them, and they'll be located on the concrete equipment pads, will utilize biodegradable enviro temp fluid as a dielectric or cooling medium. And I know that there's been quite some discussion about this fluid, so I just wanted to read some statements that are provided by the manufacturer, just so that everybody can be on the same page and clear about it. So, this is from the Material Safety and Data Sheet, which was provided as part of the submittal. And again, this is signed, and, you know, basically their stamp of approval from the manufacturer certifying their fluid. So, Part 3, Hazardous Identification, Enviro temp FR3 fluid is a preparation not classified as dangerous according to Directive 1999/45EC, not expected to cause severe emergency hazard. Also additionally, Section 11, Enviro temp FR fluid-based oils are generally recognized as safe by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, and allowed for human consumption as a food, as a component that is allowed in contact with human food. Finally, their last section is their regulatory information. That's 15, Enviro temp FR fluid itself, when discarded, disposed of, is not listed as a hazardous waste per 40 CFR 261, is not a used oil per 40 CFR 279. Enviro temp FR3 fluid is preparation not classified as dangerous according to Directive 199945EC. Further, they, and this again was provided in the submittal, they have provided a common frequently asked questions, it's the Enviro temp FR fluid frequently asked questions. So, one of the questions they have on here is, while their independent agencies have verified the fire safety of FR3 fluid, answer, test results from Factory Mutual Global, Underwriter Laboratories, Double Engineering, and the U.S. EPA have also verified the key fire safety properties of FR3 fluid is an FM-approved UL-classified fluid for indoor and outdoor installations per NEC 450-23, and meets the criteria as a high-fire-point fluid per any SC. That being said, they're saying that by high-fire-point fluid is that it's, obviously, that what it would combust at is higher than most dielectric fluids. In fact, they go on to say, with the highest flash- In fact, they go on to say, with the highest flash point and fire points of any dielectric coolant, roughly 226 degrees Fahrenheit for highest, high flash, and 680 degrees Fahrenheit for fire points. And then one, one more thing I wanted to mention as part of this document, one of the questions again is, is there anything in FR3 fluid that would negatively impact groundwater quality? Answer, though it's unlikely that the fluid would ever reach groundwater because of viscosity and other characteristic, characteristics, there is nothing that will significantly affect the quality of the groundwater. In fact, the USDA has conducted studies using vegetable oils to remediate fertilizer contaminated Furthermore, we have, and again, this was submitted, we have confirmation from the manufacturer that the FR3 fluid does not contain PFAS or Genex chemicals. Continuing on with hazardous products, I just wanted to clarify that the inverters are air-cooled, so they do not contain any dielectric fluid. The proposed solar development will not utilize modules which contain PFAS. The applicant has confirmed that they are, or will get written confirmation from all proposed manufacturers. And finally, another document that is from Mass DEP, which is another question-answer document called Ground Mounted Solar Photovoltaic System Guide, and it's from June 2015, states, because PV panel materials are enclosed and do not mix with water or vaporize into the air, there is little if any risk of chemical releases to the environment during normal So the next aspect of provisions, use, storage, and contaminants of hazardous materials shall comply with all federal, state, and regional, regional and local code, codes and regulations. As I stated, the only hazardous material is going to be what's temporary on site, on site as part of the construction, and that will comply with all the federal, state, and regional codes as described in the, the expanded operation and maintenance plan. And additionally, the temporary use and storage of fuel for construction equipment will not exceed the amount for a very small quantity generator of hazardous waste as defined in the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection pursuant to 310 CMR 30. So the final, the final documents that were part of the special permit submittal are the expanded operation and maintenance plan, and part of that was the emergency operations plan that we created a separate document for. I'm just going to, since the, the bylaw touches on several different aspects that needs to be included in these two plans, I'm going to just call out the sections that we address each of those. So section one for the, this is expanded operation and maintenance plan. Section one, we have our commissioning plan, and this indicates procedure to document and verify systems are in accordance with Mass Building and Fire Code, along with a corrective action plan in the event that something needs to be corrected. Section two, the ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system has been designed in accordance with 527 CMR 1 Mass Comprehensive Fire Safety Code. Section three, O and M manual, which outlines service, service visits, preventative maintenance, equipment maintenance, and vegetative maintenance. Then moving on to the emergency operation plan, section one, we call out the temporary hazardous material, which again is the, the gasoline, diesel fuel, and any hydraulic fuel that may be needed temporarily during construction. Section five, procedure for a safe shutdown. And section three and four, internal and external procedures to be followed in response to notifications. Section six, emergency response procedures for personal injury, equipment accidents, and fire. Section two, contact information. And section six, again, indicates procedures for coordinating onsite training for local emergency personnel. Finally, something I do want to call to attention that was not included in the emergency operation plan, but has been confirmed by the applicant, is the project electrical design has a data acquisition system, which has a built-in alarm that will be able to notify the, the fire department 24/7, does not require any human interaction, and can be monitored 24/7 remotely. So you'll be able to access the system and be able to see if there's any faults, basically indicating that the, if the system's not working, or if a, you know, panels, panels stop working, or if it needs any maintenance. And that's it for my presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Brendan. Before I give it back to you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board for questions and so forth, just a couple of additional comments. There is a, a final performance standard for the planning board before they issue a special permit, and that's kind of a catch-all provision, number nine, compliance with any other criteria found by the planning board as necessary to protect public health, safety, or welfare, including but not limited to the revocation of any prior permits and previous uses that benefit the project site. I should tell you that the, one of the conditions of the Board of Appeals modification permit, and I think the applicant assumes would also be a condition of any planning board approval on a special permit, would be the abandonment and discontinuance of the salvage yard use as a condition of any approval of the solar array. And I think it's under this number nine that gives the planning board clear authority to do that in the ordinance. And the, as I say, the Board of Appeals also made that a requirement of their modification permit approval. Finally, I should say, in the event that there is a, has this material that, or waste that is discovered in terms of the process at any stage of the game, there is always a fallback provision in the, notwithstanding the certifications that have been made, there's a fallback provision in your ordinance, the ordinance was very comprehensive in this regard, to require containment. And so if there was a condition inserted by the planning board that at the recommendation of the Board of Health, that needed to occur for any reason, certainly the ordinance provides a, a process for that as well, in terms of approval. So, Mr. Chairman, that is our presentation. We're happy to take questions at any point you, you deem it appropriate from the board or the public.
Excellent. Thank you both. Very thorough presentation. Appreciate everything. Before we go to board comments, questions, I'd just like to just say a few things to try and kind of put in my own words a summary, you know, of where we are and what the board has to consider, and after that, see if Jim has anything to add, and see if Charlie has anything to add, and then we'll continue with some board questions and comments. So, you know, after reviewing everything, and I just kind of wanted to make this initial statement, you know, so we all kind of know, you know, what brought us here. The zoning Board of Appeals reviewed this project as the applicant was seeking relief from the zoning standards established by our planning board during our previous discussions on the site, which took place about a year ago. The ZBA had jurisdiction over this as it relates to chapter 48, section three, which has been mentioned, and this section of Mass General Law states that local jurisdictions cannot regulate or restrict solar panels except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare. Locally, we have zoning ordinance 240-8, which allows the ZBA to grant further relief for those applicable to 48-3 for bulk and density regulations, where such regulation would substantially diminish or detract from the usefulness of a proposed development or impair the character of the development so as to affect its intended use, provided that the modification of the bulk regulations and/or parking requirements will not create a public safety hazard along the adjacent roadways, and will not create a nuisance to other surrounding properties such that it will impair the use of these properties. During our board's most recent deliberations on this matter, again, about a year ago, our board determined, along with town council, that 150-foot setback would be required along the property lines that a BUT developed residential properties and 100-foot the rest of the way, that that would be required to satisfy the health, safety, and welfare concerns regarding any proposed solar array. As we know, the ZBA reduced the 100-foot setback to 16 feet, and the 150 setback to 140 feet, and again, those minutes have been included in our materials. It's worth noting that during their deliberation, they focused on the bulk regulation, as they should, for setback only, and did not really focus all, on all other sections of the ordinance that may impact health, safety, and welfare, you know, such as stormwater, groundwater, or emergency response. And for me, that's where I'd like to focus our review. In addition to these waivers, our board also needs to review all aspects of the proposal to ensure it abides by the requirements that we established for the special permit process. And we need to be careful and thorough with this review. There's a lot to work through, obviously. There's a lot of materials on this one with a lot of pages. I've been doing my due diligence to work through them all, but there is a lot to get through, and I just want to state at the beginning that I feel this will be a multiple meeting event, and some of the documents that I have to continue to work through, the MSDS sheets, the decommissioning plan, the energy operations plan, the operations and maintenance plan, and the hazardous materials document. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there, so we all had a good sense of how we got here and the task before us. Jim, is there anything that you would like to add at this point?
No, I'll, I'll hold my comments until the board has had an opportunity. Thank you.
Excellent. And Attorney McLaughlin, would you like to, to speak at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, Attorney Charles McLaughlin for the town. This has been, needless to say, an important and interesting two-year adventure in some very, very thoughtful review. We, we originally had the overlay district in place that came about when the Patrick administration first came in, and it was clearly intended to allow solar as of right in, in the designated overlay areas. And there probably should have been, but there was not quite as much attention paid, paid to performance standards. And in all candor, we were not as aware as we are now of some of the issues that really do need to be addressed and were addressed as part of the process that we all engaged in that led to the passage of this. And I think everyone, including the developers, to be commended for that, I think, very free exchange and very effective drafting and led by staff and producing standards from, and reviews from out-of-state and national societies and, and so forth. So the, it's a product that we can all be, I think, very pleased and proud of at the end of the day. It is, the, the two comments I just want to offer to you as you weigh all of the materials that Mr. Robichaud has indicated are going to need to be weighed carefully, is this Up until two years ago, and there had not been any appellate-level court exam, or even trial-level court examination of what 48-3 paragraph nine meant, i.e. that you can, that solar is to be allowed as of right except with respect to considerations of public health, safety, and welfare. And as, that the, a case arose in Waltham where a project was proposed on the town line between Waltham and Lexington, and the developer there was an outfit called Tracer Lane 2 Realty LLC. And the only thing that was happening in, in Waltham was an access road being created through a residential zone to gain access over the town line to the solar array, which was going to be in Lexington. And the court, that Waltham felt that it had done enough under the as-of-right provisions, that it did not necessarily have to approve this, and there was also some question for a while anyway in litigation, that query whether the road is part of a solar system. The, it went through the land court and ended up on direct appeal to the Supreme Judicial Court, which last year ruled, one, that the roadway is a vital part of the solar system, and it made sense, particularly in this configuration, because the only way you could get to it. So that was fairly self-evident. But the court also examined the question of what reasonable regulations the municipality can still impose on a project, and they didn't give us a whole lot of guidance as to what public health, safety, and welfare meant, particularly as we had a discussion last week before the ZBA, what's public welfare have to do with, with a project such as, as health and safety are probably somewhat more evident. But at the end of the day, the court, in analyzing the Waltham project, where something around 2% of the entire city was, or town was, was zoned for solar, the court said, if you've only got 2% of the land area is zoned for solar, you're not meeting the state-mandated requirements that in light of global warming and, and all of the considerations attend to that, that you're just not doing enough. And I just wanted to read for you, very, very briefly, the, the portion of Tracer Lane at the, by the SJC that is relevant to your consideration. And it says, assuming Waltham is correct that the zoning code permits solar energy systems at all, it allows large-scale systems like the one at issue here in at most 1% to 2% of its land area. Excuse me. These standalone large-scale systems, not ancillary to any residential or commercial use, are key to promoting solar energy in the Commonwealth. Then they cite an executive office of environmental affairs report that indicates, quote, "The amount of solar power needed by 2050 exceeds the full technical potential of the Commonwealth for rooftop solar, indicating that substantial deployment of ground-mounted solar is needed under any circumstance in order to achieve the net-zero greenhouse gas emissions by 2050." The court's sending a real strong message to all of us that your findings should be detailed, whether it's pro or con, that it is vitally important that we have in mind that there is a really fundamental public policy point here that certainly we read about virtually every day now in the paper, in one, one vein or another, in one consideration or another, that, that we're going to have to achieve net-zero emissions by 2050 to have any chance of all of us owning waterfront property before it's all done. So there is that public policy within which we spent all this time going, preparing all of these objective criteria to help us evaluate the propriety and safety and, and public health issues related to a project such as this. And again, I commend everyone for their input on that. But that's the atmosphere that, under any circumstances, whether, whether you approve it or disapprove it, whether the neighbors approve it, are satisfied with it, or appeal an approval perhaps, that's the standard that the court's going to be looking at very closely. And the default position by the court is basically, you can see from that language, that solar is needed, the state policy has recognized that solar, large-scale ground-mounted solar is needed, and it's against that that there's going to be a solar is needed, and it's against that that there's going to be, I think respectfully to the court, a jaundiced eye cast on decisions that aren't really well-supported for it. So, I say that by, but with background, I don't want to, we will defend your decision in either event, whichever way this one goes. But I do want to get into a discussion for one half-second on a matter that we discussed in front of the ZBA, and that has to do with the material safety data sheet that was referred to by Brendan. And happily, we had had exposure to MSDS sheets with respect to some EverSource projects, and then Vineyard Wind, and also Cape Wind, and we're aware that there are a variety of cooling fluids that are dispersed, placed into the transformers and smaller vessels to keep this very, very high-energy production cool and safe. And that product is generically referred to as a dielectric fluid, and there are all kinds of dielectric fluids. I think the industry has recognized the inherent risks associated with some of the dielectrics that were older in use. We first got exposed to this on a EverSource expansion project over in, on Marydon Road where they were adding another transformer, but you had 10,000 gallons of this fluid that our water safety folks analyzed, had analyzed, and were very concerned about the risks it posed, if it leaked away, or caught fire, or blew up, what have you, that it could pose to, particularly over in Independence Park where our wellheads are so nearby. Happily, the industry has got the message, and certainly in the solar, I think, we're seeing evidence that they're moving to a much, much safer fluid. I will note, however, that the FR-3, which is the product that they propose here, and I'm going to give you copies of the material safety data sheet, it was--
My senator, the planning board.
Thank you. The, a couple of provisions I want to bring to your attention. Under paragraph six, there is, for dealing with accidental release measures, steps to take in case materials released are spilled. Second sentence, prevent any material from entering drains or waterways. If product contaminates waterways, rivers, or drains, alert the relevant authorities in accordance with statutory procedures. In the USA, spills into navigable waters must be reported to the National Response Center. That's an EPA agency. On page three, under paragraph 12 ecological information, the last line indicates, "FR-3 fluid shares physical hazards common to all oils such as coating, feathers, fur, and gills." The last item that is appropriate for consideration is under paragraph 13, and that's disposal considerations. The very last sentence in there is, "Do not pour into drains or waterways." This is not our product, this is not our material safety data sheet, this is the manufacturer's. And in combination, I think all of these are giving fair warning that, as vastly improved as this product is compared to what EverSource had been using and what Cape Wind was going to use, it's not without risk, and we do not want this material, if it leaks or is discharged in any way, to get into our water column and into the sole-source aquifer underneath. To that end, you have in front of you, as part of the ordinance, requirements for safe gathering of leaked product, and it's, the ordinance speaks to it in detail. We want to see 110%, we want to see a concrete sump under it with a rain drain in the middle of it that's capable of holding 110% of the fluid, and any water that would fall in a 24-hour period during a storm, a 100-year storm event. And that translates from what we've seen in calculations to about a 30-inch-deep concrete sump. And, you know, not, in the scheme, in the scheme of things, we've seen some numbers relatively for much larger projects, that it's just a tiny fraction of rounding error almost in terms of the cost of doing these projects. And we will be recommending to you that, and I trust that the developers are prepared to address the question or be prepared, it's not shown on your plans, but I think this MSDS sheet suggests that containment, emergency containment should be available. How does, how does that containment with a drain in the middle of it stop this from getting into the water column and down into the sole-source aquifer? There's a product that is out on the market, and there are various names, but essentially it's a product called Imbiber beads, and they literally pour these beads into the drain, and they sit there, and the water coming down from rainstorms and so forth passes through it freely. They are chemically sensitive to hydrocarbon products and oil-based products, and as soon as those make contact with the beads, the beads explode, close the drain, swell up, if you will, and if they're properly alarmed, we'll set off alarms to the authorities to go in and be aware that these drains have been closed and activated because of release, and then people can respond, and when the immediate weather event or whatever it is is over, they can go back and get them fixed. So, we recommend that to you. Mr. Ford has indicated that this is already in the record, and it is, I'll just give you one copy of this for the record then.
All set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much. That was very helpful, and, you know, especially important for us to consider the, you know, current public policy atmosphere in the state of Massachusetts. Jim is all set, so I'm going to kind of lead off. What we'll do, I think, is some initial board comments, questions, and then go to public comment, and go from there. So, I just wanted to kind of lead it off with my own personal thoughts. For me, health, safety, and wellness was a big topic that we discussed at our prior meetings. We heard very clearly from residents of this area, and it was something that we did not take lightly. You know, for me, there's kind of three things that stick in my mind from those conversations as well as from reviewing the materials. The first, of course, as has been discussed, is the groundwater protection with our Cape Cod sole-source aquifer. The abutting property to this site is 830 Wakeby, which has a conservation restriction for water supply protection. There's a well there called the Hayden Well Field, which is a potential, is it a future source of public drinking water, Jim, or a current source?
I believe it's a future source.
Excellent. And one thought that comes to mind as we work through this is if it might be helpful to hear from a member of the water district to give us some information about that site and possibly offer the board a chance to ask questions. So, that's, you know, definitely a concern, concern, you know, about the preservation of drinking water. And I know the site is also, you know, somewhat close proximity to other water sites such as Long Pond, and I know some sites in Sandwich near the border. Hazardous materials, as we've talked about, another big, big-ticket item for me, and I have to be perfectly honest, I just don't know enough about it right now, and that's why I need to spend more time reviewing the materials, the MSDS sheets, and the hazardous material document, just to see, you know, if I can educate myself some more. You know, I need to know more about what materials may run off these panels, I need to know more about, you know, how these materials can impact groundwater. I know very little about this, but I do know that water needs time to filter out contaminants, and I believe that this was something that was in my mind when we discussed those setbacks about a year ago. And the final one is fire safety. We do have a representative from the fire department here this evening. I do have some questions prepared, and the board can ask some questions to him as well. Just concerned about ensuring our local fire officials and public safety officers are comfortable with the design of this site, see if they've done any formal or informal risk assessments of the site, and, you know, if they believe that it's properly set up to deal with an emergency. And, you know, I want to give the fire department ample time to review this and to consider our questions. All right, so that's kind of my initial thoughts and comments, and Ray, if you could offer yours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, and I think this is probably directed to you, Jim, I think I need some more education, because it just strikes me that the ZBA decisions appear to either change the zoning ordinance that we passed or preempt the planning board's permitting process. That's what sort of hit me. So, how does that square, you know, in terms of, I guess, dueling authorities or something like that?
Sure, I can touch on that a little bit, and perhaps Attorney McGlaughlin would like to fill in anything. But, so, I understand why the perception may be that way. You know, this ordinance is on a local ordinance, however, we do also have 48, section 3, the Dover Amendment, the exemptions of use, certain uses, and this is a use within that purview. Locally, we also have 248, as the chairman mentioned, which is what we deem here locally a modification permit, and it's strictly for those types of uses, so strictly for 48.3 uses. And it specifically says certain types of exceptions are allowed to be modified. So, I believe it's bulk, and it is density, and maybe one other. And so, the zoning board's purview for reviewing this type of use under 48.3 was strictly limited to those exemptions and looking at those impacts. So, it is, it is kind of a two-step process for this specific type of use. It's, I liken it somewhat to, you know, if they were to get a variance for something that wasn't an exempt use, and then come to you, and now the applicant has an ability to propose their application as you see before you.
Thanks, Jim. But thinking forward, does that, I'm just trying to square that with, so, is the zoning ordinance still intact? Is this a modification of it? Will we, will the next solar project come to us and say, "We understand you have this, but we want to do that"? In other words, we're, it reminds me of a case of, we recently dealt with, which was, well, the height restriction is X, but I want to do double X, and that was one of the reasons why we had some qualms about, if you will, setting a precedent. And so, I'm just wondering about, on the one hand, I understand that we, there should be some flexibility. On the other hand, is this another, another version of, we're going to pass standards, but they're not really, really standards?
Understood, and perhaps I can hand that to Attorney McGlaughlin for further--
He just left, but I'll answer that one for you. I don't know whether you have 240-8, if you've all seen it, but I will make sure that you get a copy of it. But importantly, 240-8, which was the exemption or modification provision, has been in existence for years. Our late town attorney, who was beloved by all and one of the most brilliant lawyers, I think we would say that existed, really the dean of municipal lawyers in the Commonwealth at the time was Bob Smith. And although I don't know definitively that Bob's fingers are all over it, I can definitely see it. And Bob correctly was concerned about trying to balance the as-of-right issue where you really have little to no control over it versus in the limited application, particularly with respect to 48.3 issues on what you can control. And those are generally bulk regulations at the local level, and trying to balance as-of-right versus some ability to modify it, to have consideration of health, safety, welfare. Welfare being a good example, that is always probably most amorphous to define, but in context, if somebody wanted to put up a building or used to support a generating facility, and it was going to be necessarily two or three stories high and block out sun and perhaps have, obviously, negative visual impacts, if there might be cooling mechanisms associated with it that would generate noise, I'm sure that the drafters of 208 wanted some ability to control for considerations of public health, safety, and welfare, the impact of these projects on neighbors and neighboring properties. And so, this, 248 was created, and at the risk of taking time, I think it's time well-spent because I'm sure that this is an issue that we all need to think about. And 248 reads as follows, "240-8 exempt uses, section A, the following uses and structures are permitted in all zoning districts." And it continues on down. Number, section 3 says, "The use of land or structure is exempt from the use provisions of this chapter pursuant to Massachusetts General laws, chapter 48, section 3, and any other statute." And then below paragraph number 3, it says, "A, where such exempt uses are subject to reasonable regulation of bulk, density, and parking regulations by Massachusetts General laws, chapter 48, section 3, reasonable regulation shall be deemed to be the bulk regulations of the zoning district." Under section B, sub-B in that, section 3, it continues, "Where the proposed use does not comply with subsection A3A above," which I just read, "the zoning board of appeals shall, not may, shall, by a modification permit, modify the bulk regulations of the zoning district where such regulation would substantially diminish or detract from the usefulness of a proposed development or impair the character of the development so as to affect its intended use, provided that the modification of the bulk regulations will not create a public safety hazard along the adjacent roadways and will not create a nuisance to other surrounding properties such that it will impair the use of these properties." Subsection C, then finally, is a procedural question, says, "Modification permits shall be subject to the same procedural requirements as a special permit, except that approval of the modification permit shall require a majority of the members of the board." So, it's against that background that there was a delicate balance, and there still is today, where we're walking a fine line between as-of-right and reasonable, reasonable control of projects. And I think it is, with the extensive criteria that's been developed to create objectivity, not how do you feel about it, but what are the checklists involved here? It's important to go through the checklist and see how this project stacks up against those performance standards. I will say that, and I've already had this discussion with Attorney Ford, that I'm going to listen carefully, happy to jot down more notes and so forth. My colleagues have been out of town last week, and this has been fairly fast-developing. So, I'm going to ask that we not close the hearing tonight, and that we do have a chance to consider everything that is said tonight and come back to you with a written opinion well in advance of your next meeting, and I would ask that this be put on presumably for the next meeting, if that's your choice. But thank you. But thank you.
That's definitely our intent. Thank you.
Good advice. Mr. Chairman, I'm not going to repeat the points that you've already raised. I would like to touch on the decommissioning, the stand-down, the disposal plan, et cetera. I know that there's, there's cost, a cost sheet that's been done. I know that there's some discussion of kind of some steps, like things will be removed and things will be disposed, but I think that needs a lot more, and just saying, in accordance with various regulations. For me, maybe, again, this is, you know, all those years in DOD, but when you, when you go into an operation, you don't say, "We're going to take that hill in accordance with established regulations of infantry maneuver." It's, you're going to go to point A, and then to point B, and point C, and I'd like to see a lot more granularity in that. And in terms of the disposal, I just, I will share a concern and echo your concern, which is, I, to me, it's unclear whether we have both necessary and sufficient technology and expertise in this newly emerging area, and how exactly, how to do it right, how to get it right, when we have to decommission it, or it has to be decommissioned. So I just, that's a concern. You're the smart guys, and I would ask you to please take that and chew on it. And finally, we have a restricted, conservation restricted area that is very possibly going to be where we pump drinking water, or maybe our kids drink, pump their drinking water. And I don't think 16 feet is going to do it. So, Mr. Chair, I wanted to, I don't want to spin wheels, I want, kind of, I'll put that mark up there, and we can talk about it. And then finally, I guess, is another one for Jim. Have we received responses now from DPW, Board of Health? I know our colleagues from COM are here, but the COM, Fire, and Water Departments, the Water Districts, I haven't seen, maybe I missed it, but I think we still, another reason why we need to continue this, because I don't think we have comprehensive responses from them.
Right, there has been requests for comments, but we haven't received from COM Water, and we haven't received a final letter from DPW, though they have offered early comments, and we have received comments from COM Fire, who's also here tonight.
Terrific. That's, that's it for me right now, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate all that, Ray. Thank you. Yeah, and just speaking on COM Water, again, I think great to get comments back from them, but be even better to have them in the room to, you know, summarize the comments and be there to answer questions. Bob, I apologize, I'm going to take one more question, if you don't mind, before I go to you. Just while we're on the subject of 240-8, I figure this is a good time to just get this out there, because we got to ask it at some point. Why did you feel that the regulation substantially diminished, detract from the usefulness of the proposal, or impaired the character of the development so as to affect its intended use? Do you mind answering that at this time?
Without revisiting the hearing for the zoning board of appeals, I'll do my best, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, just a brief summary, if you don't mind.
First of all, I think it's important that we all keep in mind that when the council voted to zone this property as part of the overlay district, they knew it was in a GP zone, they knew it was next to this property that you're all speaking about, and yet they voted to zone it for a special permit for solar. I don't, I don't want us to lose that, that's the foundation of how we got here over the last several years.
With the established setbacks, though, the 10150?
They voted with setbacks, and the ordinance is very clear, if you read it, that the purpose in the setbacks was to control noise, says it right in the ordinance. The other thing that's perfectly clear, because I went back and read all of the minutes of all the hearings, including your hearings, was that the 150 feet was added the last night of the council meeting by a motion to amend by Counselor Schnepp. Planning board doesn't adopt the zoning. Planning board holds a public hearing and makes a recommendation to the legislative body who adopts the zoning. It was their amendment that added the 150 feet. And the board of appeals and the process for a modification permit in no way interferes with the jurisdiction of the planning board, who doesn't approve zoning bylaws, they simply hold public hearings and make recommendations to the legislative body who then adopts the zoning. So I think we need to understand people's jurisdictions, board of appeals, planning board, and what you do.
But, and, in the end, issues the special permit, which is either...
You are the special permit granting authority under this ordinance.
Right.
No question about it.
So we missed that piece in your dissertation just now. So at the end of the day, we're the ones that say whether it goes or doesn't go.
You're the one who makes the determination as to whether the special permit should issue.
Correct.
And this is a little different than your typical special permit. Your typical special permit is a "may." This one says that you shall issue the special permit if we meet the performance standards. I'm not sure you have another one like that.
That's right.
And that has to do with the fact that it's an exempt use. So all of this kind of fits together.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that we had the whole picture here, because clearly we made a recommendation to the council, the council then amended it as they saw fit, but ultimately, it's the planning board that says, "Up or down," and that's for this specific type of permit. And I think you are much smarter in most of this than me, but I just wanted to make sure that you included that just now.
I've included that by the fact that we've applied for your permission, so I agree with you, Mr. Sexton. We need the special permit, there's no question about it, and be the first one to agree with you. So, to get to your question, the answer to your question, Mr. Chairman, I just felt it necessary to give you that background, because I know that the ordinance you sent over to the council was a 75-foot setback, and this plan shows 130 feet from the residential develop side. So what we offered to the board of appeals in support of our modification permit was that almost 30% of the area of the proposed solar array, if we followed the setback that we were seeking a waiver of, the 100 feet, for a section of the ordinance which said it was to control noise, solar panels don't make noise, took out 28% of the ability to generate electricity. So the solar array got reduced in size by 28% by observing that 100-foot setback on the westerly side, the purpose of which, at least in the ordinance, says to control noise. The only thing that makes noise in this are the inverters and the transformers. Those are 150 feet away. No waiver was sought for anything that made noise. There is nothing on the face of the ordinance that indicates that that setback was adopted for the purposes of protecting groundwater. There's nothing on the face of the ordinance, nor was there any discussion in reviewing the public hearing that groundwater was the reason for the increased setbacks in the amendment the council made that night. I know you just made a comment that you felt that was one of the reasons that you made that recommendation, but that's the history of how it came down, and that's what the ordinance says. This was all about noise. So...
Jim, go ahead.
Thank you. So Attorney Ford has reiterated this at the zoning board, and I appreciate that, and I, I agree, I don't think we need to...
I'm just trying to answer the question.
Understood, I'm speaking to the chairman. And so with that, I completely agree, the zoning board was reviewing a very specific subsection of the ordinance, and to the chairman's point, because I think it's being pushed aside, is the fact that, you know, groundwater is a concern, and we have an engineer here who can provide this board with ample information that can provide some assurance, perhaps, to you all, and add some education, so that you feel that it's not going to leave the site and impact the property. As we've heard from Attorney McLaughlin already, there's at least one issue with groundwater concerns in terms of the FR3, and some amendments to the plan that should probably occur in order to preserve our groundwater. And so I think there's an opportunity there, as we look through the ordinance holistically, to understand if the setbacks are appropriate because of the holistic nature of this ordinance. Completely agree to Attorney Ford's stance on the setbacks and where the zoning board came down, but to your point, Mr. Chairman, I believe you are well within your rights to ask further, you know, concerns on groundwater and the like for the nature of setbacks. Thank you.
I appreciate that, Jim. Thank you.
May I continue?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. So to answer your question, the substantial diminution in the operation of the facility was the reduction in the number of solar panels caused by the 100-foot setback from undeveloped property, which further had been restricted through a conservation restriction, which the board cited, so that it will never be built on, so there'll never be an issue of noise on that side. And it was the opinion of the majority of the board of appeals, that they agreed with us, that to cut back the ability to produce 28 to 30% more electricity to observe a setback, which was adopted for noise from a property that was going to be undeveloped, they found it to be a substantial diminution in the ability to operate the solar array. So that, that was their thinking, and that was our proposal. Thank you for the opportunity to, to give it to you.
No, absolutely, I appreciate that. That context is definitely helpful to the board as well as the public. Bob, going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also don't want to go in and repeat things that other people have said, so I'll try to refrain from that as much as I possibly can. I do want to do emphasize, however, that, as other people have mentioned earlier, that this is a process on which this board, and the staff, and town attorney, and private parties who had interests in the project, as well as the public, spent a huge amount of time a couple of years ago to address all the concerns raised by everybody about whether this would be a good idea to have solar at this location, and if so, what was necessary to be put into the town ordinance in order to adequately protect the public health, safety, or welfare, and welfare, if a permit were to be granted for the, for this location, or any location that might come before the board at a future point in time. I know staff, and the county, and the town attorney, as well as individual members of the board, did a huge amount of research into things like dangers of battery storage and transmission, and fluids used in or ancillary to the proceedings, and what's the likelihood that those could be exposed to the environment, and how to mitigate any of those exposures that might happen. At the end of that process, all the parties got together and proposed a modification to the bylaw, which would apply to all solar developments throughout the town, not only this area, but anywhere in the future that solar might be proposed. And it's not one issue, or two issues, or three issues, it's all of the issues. The amended bylaw, which was adopted by the town council, is a combination of all of the issues which were raised, and all the mitigation factors which are necessary to address those things. In my view, you can't take a list of maybe, I'm just making a number up here, 10 parts of the regulation, and then start picking them apart, one by one by one. The regulation stands as a whole, and it's what this town determined was necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Part of those things which were concerned were noise. A big part of the thing which was of concern to the board and everyone else is water pollution. I would say, in my own personal opinion, having sat through all the hearings, that the single biggest factor of concern was potential water pollution, more so the noise, not to diminish the noise for the neighbors in the area, not to diminish the fire damage, which are danger, rather, which is obviously important to everyone, including the neighbors most directly impacted. But the biggest factor, in my opinion, as what went into the determination of this entire package, was what could potentially happen to the freshwater sources of the town of Barnstable as a result of this operation. Now, I do have a couple of questions, if I could, one of which is to follow up on Mr. Ford. Mr. Ford, could you tell me how many solar panels the proposal lost through the modification of the access road on the eastern side?
Do you know the number? If I could...
Sure, of course.
Roughly 75, which is less than 1%.
No, not the recent, he's talking about when the access road was expanded...
Okay.
From 12 feet to 20 feet, I think is your question.
That's my question, yeah.
How many panels were lost, if that was located in the solar array, as opposed to being located in the setback? I think that's his question. Is that your question?
Yeah, let me rephrase it a different way. Here's what I'm looking at. In response to the chair's question about what's the impact, I think you told us that you lost X capacity due to the modification. I'm trying to quantify X.
Okay, yes, so if, all in total, it was, if we did not have the modification permit for the 100-foot setback from the western side, and the same goes, we weren't able to put the access road on the eastern side, it was roughly 3,000 panels, or 33%.
So if I understand what you're saying, so correct me if I'm wrong, the modification that was done to accommodate the access road being expanded is you lost 3,000 panels?
If, no, that, if it was just the access road, it'd be roughly 1,000, we'll call it 1,100, roughly 10%.
Okay. Now, in the proposal to expand out on the western side into the 100-foot setback from 100 feet to 16 feet, how many panels do you gain?
That's about the remaining 2,000.
Yeah, yep, so the remaining 2,000.
2,000 over there, and 1,100 on that side, on the east side.
So you lost 1,100, but you gained 2,000?
No.
No.
We would have lost over 3,000. 1,000 of that, the access road, 2,000 the other side.
All right. So going back to my first question, then, by making the adjustment for the access road, you actually lost...
About 1,100.
On that issue itself, without any consideration of any other modifications to the proposal. I think you're telling me you lost 3,000.
No, we lost 1,100. Just the access road is 1,100.
Right.
The 20-foot access road being in the setback, that area from one end to the other is 1,100.
All right. So if you gained 2,000 by going into the 100-foot setback that's set forth in the regulation, I'm slow at math, that's why I'm a lawyer and not an engineer.
I'm a lawyer as well.
I know.
That's why I've got my...
But if you lost 1,100 on the east, and you gained 2,000 on the west, the way I count, you've gained 900 solar panels. Now, apparently, there's another 900 or 1,000 solar panels you lost somewhere else, because otherwise the numbers don't add up.
Just to clarify, so with the addition of the maintenance road, you moved that maintenance road into the setback, so no panels have been lost?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, and so...
That's what the.
So with the expansion of the maintenance road, no panels have been removed from the plan, it was encroached into the setback instead of removal of the panels?
Right. Were they lost as a result of the encroachment into the setback?
They would have been lost had the road been located within the setback, outside the setback.
All right. Here's what I'm trying to get to, and I'm still having difficulty. You've already made the modifications on the east side, and those have been accounted for, and that's not really what the big point of our discussion tonight. The big point of our discussion tonight, in addition to the issues that were raised by Ray and by Steve, about mitigation, you know, for removal of the things and collection of various substances, the big issue left is encroachment into the 100-foot setback on the western side. What I'm trying to figure out is, if we deny your request to modify the setback from 100 feet to 16 feet, how many solar panels are you going to lose?
Just on that western side, it'd be roughly 2,000.
2,000?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Out of a total of what?
Roughly 8,900, so it'd be approximately, we lose, if we were denied that, we lose roughly 20, 22%.
Okay, thank you.
And I have. Sorry, just to.
Yeah.
And if the access road was not allowed to be within the setback, then that would.
We would lose another, we'd lose another roughly 10,000 or 1,000 panels, or sorry, 10% or 1,000 panels.
Understood, okay.
And I have a question for Mr. McLaughlin, if I could.
Could I just ask one follow-up, just for my own clarification?
Yeah.
So, you, I think, if I followed your reasoning, you indicated that groundwater was, at least for you, as a member of the planning board, as important an issue, if not more important issue, as noise in determining setback?
No, that's not what I said.
Oh.
What I said was, groundwater, well, first of all, I said, the amendment to the ordinance is a package.
Yes.
It doesn't measure only setbacks, it doesn't measure only platforms, it doesn't measure only storage capacity, it measures all the things necessary for a solar development, everything.
I understand.
That includes noise, it includes air pollution, it includes water pollution, it includes fire hazards, it includes everything. And when we recommended it to town council, we put together a proposed ordinance that addressed all of those issues as a package. That's what I said. And in my mind, the biggest issue in that package, taken as a whole, was water pollution.
Understood. I just wanted to point out that in the groundwater protection district, as long as you're not in a residential zone, the setbacks of the underlying zoning setbacks for a solar array, under your new ordinance, there is no required larger setback than the 15-foot underlying zoning district, anywhere in the GP zone, other than residential, other than this site.
This site and any other site that's developed pursuant to this bylaw in the future?
No, this bylaw does apply to other sites, and as to those other sites, unless they're in a residential zoning district, not whether they're in a GP district, which is groundwater, but unless they're in a residential zoning district, they just use the underlying setbacks. So if I'm in the commercial zone, but I'm in the GP, in a groundwater protection district, you know what my setbacks are? 15 feet, under the new ordinance.
We could argue about this if and when you come back with a client who wants to do it in the commercial zone. Right now, we're concerned about the one.
I appreciate that, but I just wanted to make sure you understood that those setbacks don't apply, except in a residential zone.
Well, we can argue about that in the future, if it's necessary.
I don't mean to argue, I'm just saying, that's what the ordinance provides.
Thank you.
And that is understood, but what's before us is this site.
That's correct.
The previous ordinance, unfortunately, the five of us had nothing to do with that. Our charge is to deal with this site.
Mr. McLaughlin, I wanted to follow up on your response to Ray's question, and I think also Steve's question, with regard to the Board of Zoning, the Zoning Appeals Board action granting the waiver from 100-foot setback to 16-foot setback on the western side of the property. Are we bound by the ZBA's determination that 16 feet on the western side is what's appropriate to maintain, to protect the public health, safety, and welfare in this particular site?
That, having had that question posed to me in another office setting, it is one of the things that I want to not opine on quickly this evening, but rather sit with my colleagues and come back to you in advance of your next meeting, and I'm not begging it, it's a really unique question, and it's a really unique statutory setting for these. That said, and as we look at the much older creation of 240-8, it is the construct within which this entire process was evaluated, and as a part of the overall package of laws that we have governing this. And one, an open question, and I'm not going to answer it tonight, because I still need to think about it, the open question is, what was the intent of the council in creating 240-8, and what was the intent of imbuing the ZBA with the authority in a 40A3 context of, as of right context, with the authority for bulk regulations to consider the effects of bulk, imposition of bulk regulations on a particular event or project that is proposed? And is that, I think you're asking probably the same question, is that determination binding, and having been determined by the council, that it is the zoning board who should have been weighing in on that, and whose word on that is binding as a baseline, if you will, to consider the rest of the project? And again, having in mind that the initial solar overlay district was, help me, I believe, 2010, Jim, 2011? Yep. So that well postdates 240-8, and now we've yet again amended it, the overlay district. So, we've got to sit, and I really want to sit with my colleagues and pick this apart very actively, and from a legal analysis, and come back to you with a coherent answer that we, understanding that this is a pretty novel question, to come back with you with our opinion and advice, so.
Sure.
So bear with me, thank you.
No, I will, and I think you understand my question.
I sure do, yeah.
And I just want to make, I'm going to phrase it a little different way. At the end of the day, it may be that this board were to determine that a 16-foot setback, in our opinion, might not be adequate to protect the public safety, public health, and welfare at this particular location. And if we, in fact, reach that determination, must we nonetheless grant the permit because we are compelled to do so because of the ZBA action on this issue?
And I understand that to be the question, just phrased from a different perspective. I will say to you that having input on water quality from COM is probably desirable, and that probably certainly is desirable, if they don't choose to respond to you, one that leaves your assembly of facts and evidence somewhat devoid of some important help, and therefore hard to make decisions on a void record. So I say to you, we're going to have to approach that pretty carefully, and see what comes forward, and see what evidence is presented to you, if any, on that.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, I appreciate that. We're going to continue along, and then look to go to the fire chief and the public dem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I share a lot of sentiments with my other members of the board here, and I don't want to repeat too much of what's been discussed. I know that this is a very complicated project, with a lot of information submitted to us to review, and to get into the weeds on. I also have a lot of concerns, specifically on this site. I remember going through the overlay district recommendations to town council, and we kind of said that this was a, kind of a good project site for us to use, to review that regulation as a whole, because this site presented so many challenges. So it forced this board to look into a lot of different areas of that zoning, and I remember we discussed a lot about batteries, hazardous materials, and that led to a lot of the development of the operations and maintenance plans, and the decommissioning plans. I do have just a quick, a couple of questions for the engineer, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mike, and then I'm looking forward to hearing all of the public comment tonight. In going through the plans, do you have a benchmark elevation for the existing groundwater level?
I do not, no. I can say, from my experience on Cape Cod, it's probably somewhere in the range of, you know, 20, 30 feet below grade.
20, 30 feet below grade?
Mm-hmm, but I don't have anything specific for this site.
And what is the biggest grade change? I know that it is a very, kind of bold site in towards the center here, and there's a lot of grade changes proposed along the perimeters, particularly against some of the abutting, developed residential properties. What is the biggest downward grade change from existing grades that you are proposing?
Are you just looking for elevations, or are you looking for like a slope?
Do you have to increase or bowl down a couple of feet in the center from your existing grades, or are you kind of working?
In the center, yeah, the center, very little grade change there. I think our lowest grade in the center area, which is more like the northeastern center area, is roughly 64, elevation of 64. That's actually where one of our basins will be. The, and then the highest elevation on the side is roughly the northwestern, or northern side overall, and that's like 102, 104.
And the, what you said by the basin, and I noticed that there's a few things on the plane here, proposed basin 1P, 3P, and 2P, are those drainage basins that you were creating?
Infiltration, yep.
Infiltration, and was that included in the sections here?
So, can you repeat the question, what do you mean by sections?
Or is there a detail available for those basins, or a cross-section available for that?
Sure, yep. Sheet six of the site plans has details for, should be, the basins, and the other proposed, for example, the geotech matting.
So is the basin being developed with a stone to allow water to perk into it? I just, I see a cross-section here that just has kind of grades.
Yep, no, no, it's, no stones needed, based on the soil types, it'll be able to infiltrate, and the size that we've created, of course, it'll be able to infiltrate up to the 100-year storm. All the existing soils on site are primarily coarse-grained sand, so it has a good infiltration rate, based on the soil types.
And you were able to do a soil type analysis?
No, USDA soil data.
Okay, so you didn't do a spoon sample, or a?
No, no perk test, or anything like that.
Perk test?
No, no, no test pits.
Is it possible to request a test, I don't know if it has to be a spoon sample, or a perk test, I'm really interested in what the groundwater elevation would be on this site?
That would be great to know, is that something that COM Water could help us with, Jim, or is that something that we could request?
Typically, you can request from the applicant, and it would be witnessed by either COM Water or Board of Health.
Is there any other board comments on that? I certainly support that.
Absolutely, in fact, I believe in our site visit, that was one of the topics we discussed.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to request that. Jim, would you need a motion to request that?
No, if the applicant is in agreement.
Okay, appreciate that, Attorney Ford, okay.
And then the other thing I'm interested in, and it's funny, it got brought up in the presentation by the applicant, and some of Attorney McLaughlin's comments, one of the first notes I brought in with me tonight was about the transformers, and I see that there was this middle on it, and there was the material data sheet for the dielectric cooling material. But I wanted to know if some more details would be available, I see some concrete pads drawn on the plans, if there would be a plan available, specifically with what equipment, and what pad, in what location, and at what elevation.
Well, the, as far as the elevation, you know, that, we can definitely get that to you, I can, you know, basically give you an estimate within, you know, a foot, from, based on our proposed grade, and where we're proposing the concrete pads. As far as specific equipment, I can, we provided the equipment, data sheets that have been provided to us from the applicant. If you're looking for exactly where to be on the pad, that's something that's probably figured out later in the stage, but we can say what equipment will be located on the pad.
I'm looking for what equipment, specifically the transformers, their capacity for these materials.
Oh, right, yep.
What materials, and then, we're specifically going with this, and my biggest concern is with containment around the transformers, as it's pretty common for some of this larger, high-voltage equipment. And specifically, that transformer on that pad, the containment system around it for its materials, and what elevations that will be to the site perking elevation. So if that is at the top of a slope that goes down to one of these leaching pits, that's an area of concern for me.
Okay, yeah, so all our data sheets were provided for the equipment, I can tell you the transformers are roughly 500 gallons each of this FR3 dielectric fluid. The, we are proposing basically a transformer, or, yeah, transformer or equipment pad in the north, and one in the south. This area, the northern area, is higher. As I mentioned, there is a pond basically, or infiltration basin here, here, and roughly here.
Yeah, would we be able to get a section view of that with the exact, what is being proposed for the containment around the transformers?
Right now, the, I mean, I, are you, when you say containment, you mean something outside, what is the transformer storage, like the boundaries of the transformer itself?
Yes, I'm concerned about what happens if there is damage, a fire, explosion, you know, something with this, these transformers, and the materials that they contain, and I understand the, forgive me, is it the ER3 or EH?
They're FR3s.
FR3, sorry.
Tim, and they're 98.5% vegetable oil.
That's right.
It's the 1.5% that Mr. McLaughlin was referring to, as perhaps needing containment. The MSDS sheets show they contain even the 1.5%, no hazardous material, no hazardous waste. But there is the protocol that Mr. McLaughlin referred to, that if it leaks, you're supposed to notify certain agencies, a red flag. I don't disagree with that, I think that, and that's why I indicated that if this board requires, or the Board of Health requires, however you want to set it up, a containment for those two transformers, there's two of them, there's 500 gallons. there's two of them, there's 500 gallons in each, there's a total of 1,000 on the site. And they're not within the setback, they're 150 feet away. That will provide the containment, notwithstanding the fact that the MSDS sheets do not show that they're hazardous. So we're willing to do that. But I don't believe they're designed with that containment now. So if we can get some direction from the board that, you know, that's something you're looking to impose as a condition, then I think all your requests are reasonable. We should provide you with a, you know, a site of that, a cross-section, whatever it is you need to review it, or have the Board of Health review it.
That is where I'm going.
That's what I thought. So I just thought I'd get ahead of it.
Get ahead, thanks.
Willing to do that.
Yes. So we're interested in those details and in that containment system.
And the containment.
Yep.
Is that kind of the thought of the rest of the board, too?
You're all penciling over there.
Yeah, they're all, not in their head, yes. So I just.
No, very much appreciated.
All right, okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could just observe, just a recommendation.
Sure.
Griffin Bowden, town engineer, has been intimately involved with all of the Vineyard Wind projects. And they have the protocols in place for that design, so.
So maybe the DPW is the spot we have that condition go to with Griffin. Sounds good.
And just one, while we're talking kind of transformers and electrical stuff, and I'm just not too familiar with solar development projects, as was evident through all our first hearings, and we were getting crash courses on what a battery storage is. There are the solar panels, the arrays spread over the site. There are these two transformer locations, and there are some underground utilities that connect them together. Are there other items outside or like the telephone poles out on the street, or kind of more the utility side of this operation? Telephone pole-mounted transformers that Eversource would have to bring onto the site. I did see some new telephone poles and some work on that side. So I'm just, you know, what happens after it leaves those transformers and we're good out to the street? And has Eversource provided any engineering plans?
So, yeah, I kind of start at the beginning. Basically, the energy is produced by the solar panels, that's in DC. Then you have inverters, which are air-cooled, they don't have any fluid involved with them. And that converts it from DC to AC. Then it goes to the transformers. And as probably are aware, you know, your voltage is different between what you plug into, you know, outlet in your house versus what's traveling on the lines. Transformer steps it up to the 240 volt. At that point, it will be going through what we call interconnection equipment. And those are things that are like a meter, which keeps track of how much energy is being produced. This is for Eversource to keep track of what's going into the grid one, but also keep track for, for the solar incentives and how much they're going to be, you know, paying for the electricity that's being produced. There's a recloser that is basically, it acts as kind of a safety default, but also it can, can be used as a disconnect. And there will be, I believe there will be another transformer on that pole, or one of the poles, there's five total. That equipment is your, would be kind of your standard transformer that you see on most utility poles. So I don't know the voltage on that, but it's one of the smaller ones that you would see. The Eversource owns, basically, it's kind of a little bit redundant. They have their own equipment, and then it goes through similar equipment again that the customer owns. That is just kind of the policy. Some of it's the meter again. So the customer has a meter and Eversource both have meters to track how much energy is being produced.
Is there an approved interconnect plan currently?
They, I believe they do have a, basically what happens is they take a look at your project and they see how much you're looking to produce. And then they tell you, can the grid currently handle what you're proposing to put into it? And your first step is that, can it handle it or is there any upgrades? Then they get more specific in exactly what equipment they need. I'm not sure if they've gone to that second stage where they have this specific equipment. But the general equipment is all the same, it's just the specs on the specific equipment that changes in that second stage.
I mean, whatever the interconnect equipment is, if you want copies of that, to the extent we have, happy to get you that, too, Tim.
Yeah. I think the only question would be, and I know, actually, we had this discussion last time, we were talking about underground utilities and Eversource can be difficult to deal with, is depending on how the grid is arranged for the overhead just outside this project, is if they would also have a ground-mounted transformer, you know, right at the base or right where it comes in? And I don't know if Eversource standardly uses these very hazard-free type of transformers. A lot of theirs do have PCBs and that sort of thing. So I just don't know, you know, and I don't know if that information's ascertainable until Eversource finishes their engineering. And maybe it's something that we can put in that, once the final interconnection plan is, you know, we can, it can be reviewed by the building department or something like that.
I believe typically that's included also when you go to building permit, is that final design. But I don't typically see, unless you already have underground electric on the street, you don't typically see a, it go from above, or you know, overhead to pad-mounted.
To a pad-mounted.
Yeah.
Here it does because there is a pole that comes in and then you're going underground to your meter and everything.
From, correct. But I mean, from the actual existing, you know, utility line, it wouldn't typically go from the overhead to a pad-mounted from there. It'd go to our interconnect, interconnection equipment. It would stay on utility poles and then it goes underground. You know, that's, that's typical design there.
Yeah. And then it's within your, from basically that fence line in is kind of all underground to that for all your.
For, yeah, for, to the transformers, yep. The, there's wiring between all the panels and the inverters that I mentioned that are basically connected to the back of the panels.
And just kind of one last question on some of these technical and utility details. There's no antennas proposed for remote monitoring or anything? Radio equipment or anything like that?
Not radio equipment, remote monitoring, but it's basically a router size.
An internet kind of service?
Yep.
Okay. I do have a lot of kind of questions and, you know, some concerns over some grading, especially some of the vegetation. I don't know, I know that there was a site visit, I think arranged a year and a half ago, too, whenever this was in. I don't know if that is up for discussion or if we could, you know, if other board members feel that maybe a visit at the site, now that there is a specific proposed plan, something that we can review and maybe even have some of these boundaries and some of these things staked out would be beneficial, I think it would be.
I agree. And I would just ask that we all make it happen between the next meeting so we can kind of stay on track.
I will do what I can do to help arrange that and work out a date with Jim.
Great. Appreciate that.
Okay.
Tim, all set for now?
The last thing I just have, and I think it's the same concern, is I'm very interested to hear the fire department. I know that there was, I think it's a recent letter submitted, so that and public comment tonight. So I think that's it, am I? Thank you.
Great, thank you, Tim. Michael?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think it's pretty clear that this board needs more information in order to make a decision for this special permit. I appreciate the presentation. I made a note that you, on your presentation, it says that there is no hazard materials, no battery energy system. And also, I'll be interested to learn a little bit more about the FR3 fluid that it says on your presentation that is not classified as dangerous. So to me, I mean, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that safe, health, safety, and welfare is very important for us. And in my opinion, I do need to be more educated in this topic in order to make a decision. So I'm very eager to hear what the public has to say, including the fire department. That's all I have to say for now.
Excellent. I'm with you on that, Michael. Thank you. I'd like to go to the fire department next, Cal Fire, so that the public can have a chance to hear the comments from him. So come on now. If you can just state your name for the record. Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. My name is Lieutenant Patrick Hill from Cal Fire. I am the Fire Prevention Officer for the Fire Department. I will say, early on, we had a number of concerns that were within our peril with some of these, with this specific photovoltaic site. We have some other ones within our district. And unlike the other ones, there was no battery storage with this one. Battery storage poses our biggest threat to lives and property. So once we found out there was no battery storage, our threat level did go down quite a bit. I will say that we were in communications with TGA, Clean Energy, Mr. Reali and Attorney Ford. They were very forthcoming with all the questions that we had, including a site visit as well. The top three concerns that we did have, and a lot of them were already mentioned, I just wanted to kind of touch over each one and give you my point of view with each one as well. The first was some type of hazard mitigation plan or emergency preparedness plan. Photovoltaic systems are very complex. And by no means were any of our personnel going to attempt to shut them down under any situations. We're not trained in doing so. We wouldn't put our firefighters in jeopardy of doing that. So it would be up to the developer to have someone come down with a 24/7 plan to shut the system down in order for us to begin fire suppression. The second concern we had was access roads, which we talked about in length a little bit here. Proposed early on, it was a 12-foot road. And we had gone back and forth a little bit, and we finally agreed upon a 12, a 20-foot road for fire department access. Along with that 20-foot road, and it really wasn't talked about much, I do believe it is in the paperwork, is also annual maintenance to that road. You know, it's one thing just to put a road in, but that also has to be maintained. And that's something that we plan on inspecting on an annual basis, is going out to that site and making sure that that road is maintained, including snow removal as well. The third concern that we had, which we, which we talked about again in depth tonight, was hazardous material being used or stored on the site. And Mr. Reali confirmed that most of it was just in the construction stages. It was diesel, gasoline, and hydraulic fluid. Based on NFPA 850, one of the biggest threats with these systems is hydraulic oil fires associated with hydraulic oil systems. With that being said, this FR fluid appears to be less hazardous than some of its alternatives. Also, when you're dealing with great quantities of anything, there's always potential hazards there. Even, even a fluid that may not present itself as a hazardous fluid, you're talking about large quantities of something. So the fire department would be in favor of emergency containment also. At this time, if there's any questions for the fire department, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a couple, but I'm going to start with Ray.
Well, basically, and I have to give Ms. Alice a kudo here, we got a heck of an education from some of her research about, basically, worst-case scenario, place catches on, this is assuming, this is assuming batteries now, all right? But catches on fire, burns to the core of the earth. There was a place in, I don't know, Indiana, someplace like that. And the, the fire chief proudly announced after the neighboring town was evacuated for three weeks and that after 128,000 metric tons of concrete, the fire had been put out. So I'm really relieved. I think the batteries were really a big concern here. In terms of other materials, like I, again, I will say, I, I'm getting educated. And I know that the solar panels are comprised of some interesting rare earths. Their internal guts come from far away, and I think China owns most of the mines that sell them, I think. But are you, will you be prepared to deal with something if it combusts or it corrodes? Because it could be fast motion or it could be slow motion. And, and will, will your department be in a position to be able to spot either?
Well, I'll say you're not alone when you say that you're learning all about it. I think we all are. These systems, they're not new. They've been around in residential for a long time, but some of these larger sites are new to a lot of us. Again, the biggest risk here was battery storage. That is our biggest risk to people and property. I would consider what we have here would be a low-risk, high-hazard. The risk of something happening at this site is low. The hazard is high. If something does happen, it could be pretty serious. With that being said, we, we wouldn't attempt any type of fire suppression while that system was live. So the biggest delay would be in fire suppression, would be waiting for that system to be shut down. Because again, we're not going to shut it down. We're not trained in doing so. Once that system is shut down, it's a matter of fire suppression at that point. Until then, it's about protecting exposures. Any nearby houses, any nearby, you know, anything that would, that would need any type of exposure protection, that would be our number-one priority at that point.
Right. So Attorney Ford, I guess that's a note to take, as Lieutenant mentioned earlier, is definitely going to have to have a, make some provision for 24/7 support for the shutdown, right?
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well said. And I just wrote that down as well. You know, whoever would be the individual responsible for shutting this down, they would need to be somewhat nearby, you know, within reason. Have a few questions. The, the main question comes to fire suppression. Once the site is shut down and you move to fire suppression, what exactly does that look like? And for me, you know, I wonder, is it, is it water? Is it foam? And if it's anything other than water, is it something that could be considered hazardous? Is there an MSDS on it? If you can talk about that a little bit.
There is. Right now, our main plan is to use water as much as we can. Obviously, we can't do that with a live system. You can't put water on a solar site for obvious reasons. So again, the importance would be shutting that down. If any type of foam was to be used, of course, there is MSDS information that we could gather, you know, to it before next meeting. I can get you that information as soon as possible.
What would be the factor or the threshold or that would lead to switching from water to foam?
I'll have to get you that information. Again, these systems are really new to us, so I'll have to dig a little bit deeper to get you accurate information on that.
And I appreciate you looking into that. Of course, we all, we all have much to look into, so.
Agreed.
You know, really just understanding if foam was used, what that foam might mean to groundwater and.
Of course.
Learning about that a little bit. Final question. Are you aware of any other incidents that have occurred at solar sites in the town of Barnstable?
Town of Barnstable, no, I am not.
Great.
We do have some similar sites within our district. Again, more hazardous with battery storage, but I'm aware of no incidents within those sites.
Okay. Great. Bob?
Thanks, I'm good.
Excellent. Tim?
I'm all set, thanks.
And Michael?
I am all set, thank you.
Great.
Great. Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick questions while we have the lieutenant here. Source of water. Is there a source of water on-site for not only the fire, but also, I know in your maintenance plan, there is kind of washing down. Do you know if there's on-site? Or if, if not, is there a close hydrant? And if there isn't, do you, would you prefer, I don't know if that's Cal or Fire, I mean, water or fires jurisdiction, but a hydrant location might be necessary to discuss?
He, yes. Patrick actually asked us to show the closest fire hydrants on the plan, which have been revised to show that. As far as I know, there is no water on-site.
So for maintenance purposes, what's the protocol there?
Typically, they bring in some type of vehicle that had a container of water. I mean, especially around here with the amount of moisture we get, that maintenance happens maybe once a year. So it's not something that has to happen a lot.
Understood, thank you. And along those lines, lighting? I didn't see, again, I didn't see it on the plan, maybe I missed it. But is there any security lighting? And do you, Lieutenant Hill, do you need security lighting if not?
No proposed, no.
We don't require anything. We do have the ability to bring our own lighting to a scene if need be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. One final question, if you don't mind. One final question, if you don't mind. What do you like to see for snow removal? Do you have guidelines such as must be cleared within a certain amount of time?
That's a great question. And again, I'm going to have to get back to you with an answer. That hasn't been that thought into yet. That was actually brought to my attention by somebody behind me. And it's actually a great point that needs to be addressed. So, we'll have to look further into that as well.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else for the lieutenant? Seeing done, you're all set?
Thank you. And if there is an additional site plan, we'd be happy to tag along too, if need be.
Oh, great. We would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Attorney McLaughlin? Go ahead.
Just a quick observation, since we've been involved with Cape Vinian Electric and deployments. Water on-site has been vital over the senior center. The first iteration of trees took an absolute beating one summer, and a lot of them died off. So, there may need to be some evidence presented with respect to adequate irrigation to keep this in good.
The button, yeah, sorry.
All right. Thank you. Not uncommon to see a minimum growth period, survivable period, extending out over a number of years and replaced as necessary if they don't succeed.
Great. Well said. Appreciate that. Okay. So, at this point, we're going to move to public comment. First of all, I want to thank all the members of the public for their patience this evening. And we look forward to hearing from all of you. We're going to follow along the approach used by Town Council, which is three minutes per speaker. Tim O'Neill is going to monitor that for us. Tim? You get a phone with a timer. We're not going to be, you know, hard-fast about this. At three minutes, Tim is just going to give a reminder. And we just ask that you wrap up. And just a reminder too, you know, speakers are given one chance to speak tonight. Just, I don't want a kind of back-and-forth to be established between the applicant and the public. We're also going to keep the public hearing open. Next meeting, hopefully, we're going to hear from COMFIRE. So, I'll make sure that everybody has an additional moment to speak. When you come up to the microphone, please make sure you push the button so we can hear you and just state your name for the record. And the first member of the public can come on up and speak. Great, thank you. All right. Appreciate it, thank you. We're like old friends now, you know?
Anne Salas, 145 Mockingbird Lane, Abutter. I did have, I have a time exactly at three minutes. But I did have a couple of things that I wanted to say before my three minutes started. Is that possible, Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Number one, we need to determine who will be the owner and operator after TGA has sold. Once they build it, they'll sell it, so that these emergency coordinations, shutdown procedures can happen easily. And where would that nearest emergency personnel be? And number two is that it may be that DPW, Board of Health, and COMFIRE are waiting for the hazardous materials list to put their input into the whole situation. Also, 750 and 800 Wakeby Road, they are near the entrance. They will be exposed to a transformer. And I have some of the noise emissions on the technical data sheets that I provided there for you. And there's no berm and no plantings completely abutting those properties. And that's a very major concern. There are young children, young families living in those two homes. Okay, you can start my three minutes now, thank you. The use of our homes and land would be substantially reduced and impaired if burned to the ground or covered with toxic soot. Not just abutters, but also families within the evacuation radius of several miles. Just living with that fear is horrifying. Hurricanes, tornadoes, human error, soy-based wire coverings eaten by small animals, the wings of hawks and owls hunting and short-circuiting, the 11 acres of high-voltage cables. That's how fires are started. And it's well-acknowledged that solar fires are vastly under-reported. The Fire Department is acutely aware and concerned that two miles to the west of 810 is a 4.5-megawatt solar installation. And three miles to the east of 810 is a 4-megawatt installation, both with giant lithium-ion batteries. We do not need to be surrounded by solar plants with or without batteries. And there is no need for another. I've asked Attorney Ford, oh, sorry, Attorney McLaughlin. I saw a document with the Land Court documents that analyzed our percentage of solar in Barnstable. And so, perhaps we can have that information. I know it's a lot more than 2%. The let-it-burn policy that Waltham has and that we would have is the Fire Department's only choice to avoid at least some water contamination. Thick, toxic soot would cover everything and seep into groundwater for the same several-mile radius of a forced evacuation. Waltham has not permitted the construction of their 1-megawatt solar plant for the same reasons. TGA's 5-megawatt plant with a let-it-burn policy poised above 18 acres of public water supplies poses unconscionable dangers to the public. TGA's Ops and Maintenance Plan, that's the first page of the document sheets that I gave you. Ops and Maintenance Plan, page one. System documentation shall be completed. Way at the bottom. Documentation of the system shall be completed. And I think this is where much confusion is coming. Because we don't have full documentation of all the system components. There's a lot of confusion. And if you read, it talks about spec sheets for 14 transformers, but there are only, we're told, only six in the plan. But there are none that actually appear on the plan. And there are spec sheets for, oh.
Ms. Salas, it's been.
Okay, sorry. So, no hazardous materials list. A letter of assurance is not a list. And I think that's where a lot of difficulty is coming in. It should be known that manufacturers of solar panels always supply a list of the materials, the rare earths, and so on. Solar panels are usually considered hazardous waste, but there's no provision for that in the decommissioning plan. My concern is that the decommissioning plan is entirely inadequate because of this lack of clarity about what the plan components are. And they've had eight months to supply this information since September 1st. You voted against this project before for all the right reasons. And this time, you have the backing, support, and even, I'd say, the blessing of the Supreme Judicial Court, which has charged you with the responsibility to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of this town before any other interests. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Appreciate that.
Very welcome.
The next speaker can make their way forward and state their name. We'll go from there.
Good evening. Catherine McDonough, 111 Mockingbird Lane. Wow, our first in-person meeting on this subject since before COVID. I really wish I could say it was good to see you all again. Among the Planning Board, ZBA, and Town Council, you've heard our histories with this project and property, as well as our shared concerns about this nefarious landowner and unreliable representation. We've really come full circle since this process began and is now concluding with your decisions. I remember you guys saying, "Well, if this project does make its way back to us, we'll make sure all concerns and finer points in the solar overlay ordinance are addressed," which we appreciate immeasurably, such as the serious concerns about groundwater and fire safety, because there's still a great deal of missing information regarding these exceedingly important issues, as you've already said. Then there are concerns our good neighbor Anne brought up when she found a flaw in the decommissioning plan, as well as those brought up by Attorney McLaughlin, who said that though coolant was mainly vegetable oil, there is no type of oil considered innocuous when groundwater is concerned. And that one gallon in something like 500 million is enough to wreak havoc. Sounds pretty hazardous to me. There were also concerns raised by TGA's attorney, who at the same meeting said, "Our worries about the old plans with 50 transformers and 100 inverters were misplaced, because the total number would now be one and two of each," which was yet another inaccuracy that the representative from Atlantic Design didn't even point out until later on after being pressed directly for clarification. How can we trust what they say with all these discrepancies between what's written, reported, and planned? More concerns arose when we watched attorneys squabble because the legal notice of said meeting was also, you guessed it, flawed, and failed to include mention of the change in setback on the abutter side due to their need for a wider emergency access road that ultimately came down to sound. Has anyone studied the sound on that property? Atlantic Design's representation described it as a bowl. And we were told 150 feet was enough to disperse sound from the transformers and inverters. But because of its unique topography due to years of illegal digging, all sound back there really travels. And we can hear people talking from all the way on the other side where the cement pad will be, people working even from Wakeby Road at the entrance, and know from decades of experience, 150 feet won't be enough. That change in setback was to the detriment of the abutters seeking refuge rather than the business seeking monetary gain. Why? Perhaps because TGA has repeatedly sued our town, other towns, and other individual board members. But clearly, their bullying worked, because we listened to ZBA member Pennard nearly shout in this room on April 12th that, quote, "I don't want to go to court over this," end quote. The threat of personal legal entanglement even being a factor flies in the face of jurisprudence. But that's what TGA does. They make it personal when it shouldn't be, because this vote isn't about how much money they can throw at us as a result of good judgment that may not be in their favor, but about our residents that have been appealing to this town in desperation for decades. At that same meeting two weeks ago, after numerous errors in the paperwork and representation were brought to light, including the false claims to sunsetted salvage variances, since the original conditions included that no trees were to be removed, which they have many times over, and that it was only valid while the original petitioners were still alive, and they are not. Also, untrue statements that the trees are conveniently cleared now because of the sand and gravel use that ended 20 years ago, rather than because the landowner chopped them all down a few summers ago. Speaking of trees, nine-foot evergreens that are higher than the panels are really nice, unless your property looks out over that land as ours does. So, they won't be screening anything for us, since we can see clear across to Wakeby Road from our kitchen window.
McDonough, it's been three minutes.
Okay. A couple of things came up during the thing. Also, because of the no water on-site, and they die, will they be required to be replaced? Despite these inaccuracies and dozens of emails written in opposition, the vote still went through. We were wondering why we were bothering with public comment when it seemed as though we were speaking to people whose minds had already been made up. But we really appreciate your ongoing attention and concern and edumacation. We're not scientists or engineers or businessmen or lawyers. We can't speak to these issues with data and legalese quite the way they can. But we are speaking as well as we can. And I really wish that after decades of disruption of and threat to our health, safety, and welfare due to 810 Wakeby, we'd be taken more seriously without costly legal representation. I asked the ZBA then, and will ask you now, how can you measure stress? Measure the impact on our properties every time we leave our yards and close the windows because the machinery starts kicking up dust? Measure fear or anxiety? How can you measure welfare? The ZBA asked Attorney McLaughlin to define welfare, but he couldn't. So, how can we possibly provide you with hard evidence of something that cannot be defined? ZBA member Webb said, and I'm paraphrasing because the minutes are not yet available, that there's clearly no guarantee of health, safety, and welfare on this project. And without those guarantees, our health, safety, and welfare are most certainly at risk. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Next up? Come on down.
My daughter.
Oh.
We live at the same address. Christine McDonough, 111 Mockingbird Lane.
Just make sure the microphone's on. Little green button.
Hello?
Yeah. You're good, okay. Take it away.
111 Mockingbird Lane, Christine McDonough. Catherine said it all. There's not much more I can say, other than 30 years ago, we were before these boards, all the town boards, when the owner of the property illegally took all the gravel out of there and created this huge pit. Catherine was a little girl. We thought she was going to die because the angle of repose was so bad. Anyway, here we are again, trying to make our case heard. Our neighbors are all in unison. We do not want this in our backyard. We are fearful, afraid of our safety, health, and welfare. Please do the right thing. Don't allow this permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very much appreciate you and your daughter. Any additional comments at this time? Good evening. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Mary Burgonshaw. I live at 133 Mockingbird Lane. And I've lived in this house for 30 years. I've experienced everything. And I feel like I've told this story 100 times to 100 different panels of people. And I sent a letter with my concerns, and I think they've all, you know, we've talked about those. One of the things that is truly concerning to me is that when the agreement was the 150-foot from our lots and then 100-foot on the other side, it was one of those things that I felt as though, okay, we have, you have to compromise sometimes. We have to compromise. And maybe it will be okay. Maybe it will be fine. You know, maybe they'll put some trees in. Maybe we could deal with this. But then, it seems, just as every other experience with this property has been, you give a little, but then it's like they take a mile. It's like, okay, now 150-foot is now 140-foot. 100 feet on the other side, which is conservation. And I do encourage all of you to walk the property, but also go behind the cell phone tower on the trails. If you go right up on Wakeby, there's a cell phone tower. And you can, there's trails that go along the edge. It's a cliff. It's a cliff that goes down, I don't know how many feet. I'm not good at judging that, but it's a cliff. I don't, and you can see where the new markers are, where they had it surveyed. I don't know how any angle is going to be appropriate there. I don't know. I'm not an engineer. But it seems as though every time, that none of the rules have ever been followed. None of the zoning has been followed. There was a Superior Court decision that no trees should be removed from that property after we, the neighbors, hired an attorney and had to have a cease and desist. There was a ruling that there was a cease and desist, and that no trees were to be removed from that property. That front five acres could be continued as a salvage, which frankly, doesn't bother me at all. The trucks that are out there and stuff, whatever, forever, boats and things. But no trees should be removed. The trees have been clear-cut twice to the property line. There's three strands of barbed wire on the property line. You know, good neighbors set their fences back, you know, a couple of feet in case you get to do some work on either side. But no, directly on the property line, clear-cut. Couple of winters ago, tons and tons of dredging spoils from Mashpee Neck were dumped, right up to the lot line. Big dump trucks come in, looking out my kitchen window, dumping all the dredging spoils out there. When it rains, there's permanent water out there. The dredging spoils do not help the drainage at all. The water sits. And when the illegal mining operation, to cap the dump, because that was where all that dirt went, was to cap the dump, he dug below the water table. So, that bowl that's been referred to is, I don't, it's probably three feet above the water table. I don't know. But there's water out there constantly. So.
It's been three minutes.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Well, thank you for.
You can make some closing comments.
Oh.
Just wrap up, kind of, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just don't, as I said in my email. I just don't, as I said in my email, I just don't have faith that any of this is going to be followed through with. I think there are going to be two-foot abreviate from Job Lot planted out there that are probably going to die in, you know, six months. They're not going to be tended to. The old growth oak and holly and beech and white pine that are piled up, wasn't even cut down for firewood or for any purpose. He cut them down and piled them up in the middle of the property. Just a waste, a waste. It's not like he sent it off for lumber or anything. It just was out of spite when his appeals were denied. And those are never going to be replaced. And I don't think three-foot abreviate on a nine-foot berm, sounds lovely, but I don't think anybody's going to be out there maintaining it. And I hadn't even thought of the snow removal for the road in the wintertime, too. I just, it's my understanding that the town has ample property where a solar array like this would be more appropriate. It just, you know, solar's great, but where, you know, there's a place for everything. And this is literally in my backyard. My house is probably the closest to this, so.
Okay.
So thank you all for your time.
No, thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Good evening.
Nancy Minniger Road. I live at 95 Biscayne Drive. I'm not an abutter. You know, you folks have been listening to us for like four years. You've heard all of our reasons for wanting this thing not to happen. And the only thing that's changed is we've found more and more things to wonder about and be afraid of. And certainly, the health, welfare, and safety of all the abutters and nearby residents will be impacted. In fact, the entire town will be when this precedent is set, which really concerns me because this zoning should never have been changed. Our town's in a housing crisis, and we changed residential zoning for a solar array? I'm just appalled at the whole situation, and I urge you to deny this. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Welcome. Good evening.
Diane Sullivan, 140 Mockingbird Lane. I've been there for 21 years. TJ Asolar said they would put up 50-foot trees. That's fine if you stand at the base of the tree, but Mockingbird Lane is a much higher elevation, and if you stand on Mockingbird Lane, you can see right down into that area. And the houses across the street are built, even mine, on a higher elevation, and no height of any tree is going to stop that, being able to see into that area. It will be highly visible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Welcome, sir. Good evening.
Hi, everybody. Steve Kowalowicz, 26 Dove Lane. I'm across the street one from this whole proposed thing. I got a lot of concerns. I think there's maybe some good places for solar and some not so good places. This is not the place for this. In a bowl, building on top of fill, with neighbors very close, with a wooded area to the west, which, getting back to a couple of weeks ago, it seems like the standards and some of the regulations that some thoughtful people put into place for these solar arrays, and last week, the one word was cherry picked out of this whole thing, sound. I have to believe that these setbacks were made for more than just the sound, that they were incorporated into a bigger thinking of the whole projects. So with the one word, worrying about sound, and because there's, just so happens to be nobody on the property to the west, which I think is irrelevant. So getting back to these setbacks, I don't think anything was lost if this was designed to fit to the setbacks that were proposed, that this was planned for, the 150 and 100-foot setbacks. And if it was designed for that, then nothing would be lost. So they're trying to gain a little here, and one of my concerns is, my big concerns are the fire problems. How fast will this system be shut down? And how fast will people be notified? And how long does it sit and burn? The fire plan, I got a lot of concerns about the water issues, building this in a bowl. How much, how much water does the catch basins hold? Where's it go? What's the plan after all this gets into the catch basin? Where does it go? I got a lot of questions, just like everybody up here, so I'm going to be thoughtfully doing more homework, trying to educate myself. Luckily, we've got some people here who have done a lot of homework, and so I'm on a learning curve with this. But water issues, fire issues, and regarding the setback that was lost on, that the modification was made on the west side, I'm wondering if any of this setback was made with the intention of maybe being a fire break? I'm concerned of a brush fire through the woods on that southwest side, jumping 16, was it 16 or 15 feet? And, and so I have a lot of concerns, a lot of concerns. Are the fire roads going to be maintained? Anyway, I have a lot of questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any additional public comment at this time? Okay. Seeing none, go to Jim. Jim, you have anything to say at this time?
Nothing further this time.
Nothing at this time? Okay. And attorney Ford, anything you wanted to state at this time?
We've tried to keep track of the things that you've asked us for, and so we'll coordinate with your staff and make sure that, in terms of deliverables from our side, we make sure we get those for the next meeting. Apparently, you're also expecting to get an opinion from the town attorney's office on the action of the zoning board of appeals and how that affects the planning board's consideration of our application. And we will work with staff. The final thing I had was to set up a site visit as quickly as we could, and we'll also try and involve the fire department in that. They've requested that they be notified of that as well. But I've got a list of at least a dozen things here, as I heard the various board members speak, that they were looking for additional information on.
I appreciate that. Yeah, just.
And then I'd simply reserve the right to make comments in terms of rebuttal of various things that have been said. I think at this point in the hearing, it's probably best, since you're going to keep the record open, to do that when all of that is concluded.
I think that would be great, and of course, as you're right, and we'll look for that at the next meeting. Some of the things I had, just jotted down, the fire lieutenant has quite a few questions to get back to us on, so we'll look for those. Looking for some comments from health, looking to possibly have Calm Water present at our next meeting, looking to set up a site visit. Board has a lot of work to do to make sure that we've read all the materials and understand them. Tim, can you just clarify what you brought up with some soil testing, perk test?
I was just interested in what the groundwater elevation is on the site. So that can be done sometimes with a perk test, which actually, that's done to determine the drainage viability of the soil, but sometimes groundwater, if it's only a few feet down, you know, dig six feet down. It can also be taken with a spoon sample, where they will come in and they drive a tube in, a pipe, and pull it out, and they can determine the groundwater height at that.
Oh, cool. Okay.
And I think you were interested in the relationship in terms of location of that and the two pads that we have, where the transformers will be, where the liquid that people were concerned about is.
Correct.
Yeah. So we'll try and coordinate that.
Another thing we'd love to get a little more info on is just, you know, security and personnel. You know, what kind of time you'd be looking at, at response with shutting down the site? Any additional information that can be shared there? We'll just go to the board one final time for kind of some closing comments at the stage for next meeting, and then we'll continue this item. I'm just going to lead off by saying, you know, although our board discussed, you know, that smaller setback, you know, we chatted between 75 and 100 feet. I will say that I do stand by Councilor Schnapp and her recommendation, as well as the town council on that decision. You know, initially, initially leery about reducing that 150 setback because of considerations for health, safety, wellness of those residents. You know, items that have come up tonight came up previously, water protection, drinking water noise, glare, fire safety, and the simple visual aspect of the solar panels in their backyards. I will also admit that, you know, 150 to 140 is only a 10-foot reduction, and it is a road, not panel, so I do recognize that fact. I will also say that I do believe this board and town council were justified, you know, in looking at that buffer, that setback, looking out for the health, safety, and wellness of those residents. And, you know, I just look to hopefully hear from Calm Water on, you know, what they can inform us to alleviate some of those concerns about that 830 Wakeby site. So that's where I'm at. That's kind of my thoughts. Ray, anything you wanted to add before we continue on?
I think you covered the waterfront. I do want to bring our attention to something that did come up, and there has been a rash of terrorist attacks on electrical sites in various parts of the country. And I don't know where, I should have asked a lieutenant or perhaps the police department about this, but I am concerned that we have at least a contingency and maybe an SOP. Am I speaking too much DOT?
Standard operating, is that standard operating procedure?
Yes.
All right.
Basically, how do you keep an eye on it so somebody doesn't come and shoot it up? In a nutshell. And I don't know where the general planning is, and I don't want to throw an extra rock around your neck, but on the other hand, I also, I'd like to be a little bit ahead of the curve on something like that. So I just, again, that's, I think it's important to think about as opposed to got to do, and maybe you could get back to us, or we'll also, Jim, maybe I just found you something else to do. See, I'm good at that. Perhaps we can find out if there is some kind of planning along those lines. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ray. Appreciate that. Bob?
I'm good, thanks.
All right. Tim?
I just have one quick question for Jim. Was the zoning, the board decision, was that in the LaserFISH file? I didn't see that for some reason.
No, the decision isn't finalized yet. It should be submitted to the town clerk in the next day or so.
Oh, so the board closed and they're finalizing the decision, and then they'll submit to the clerk?
They have rendered a decision. It's just being drafted and signed.
Okay. So when that goes in LaserFISH, do you want to just email us saying it's been uploaded?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you. That's all.
Excellent. Thank you. Tim? Michael? Anything to add?
I'm good. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. So again, we're going to leave the public hearing open to allow the public to stay engaged in this process and make future comment. At this time, obviously, it's the recommendation of the board to continue this hearing to the next meeting, which is May 8, 2023, at 7:00 PM. Attorney Ford, is that aligned with your schedule?
It's not, unfortunately. I have a town meeting that night in a town where I am the town council, Orleans.
Okay.
So I do have a conflict that evening.
Understood. Jim, do you have the next meeting available by chance?
May 22 is what Karen is telling me.
May 22, 2023, at 7:00 PM.
May 22. Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. Got it.
Too many numbers.
All good. We'll look for a motion to continue.
Mr. Chairman, a motion. Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion. I move that this, this hearing, SP 2023-002, 810 Wakeby Road, be continued to 22 May 2023 at 7:00 PM.
Excellent. Thank you, Ray. And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Michael. All those in favor? Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Matter is continued. Thank you.
And just to clarify, that will be in person here at town hall.
That is correct. That will be in person. Thank you, Jim. Attorney Ford, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the public, thank you very much for coming. Appreciate your patience. Attorney, thank you. Attorney McLaughlin, thank you as well.
Excellent.
Thank you. Let me take this back from you. All right, moving along. That one's yours. Staff updates. Kate, spotlight is on you, LCP.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. So the public, sorry, the draft existing conditions report of the local comprehensive plan is available for review on the project website. That's barnstablelcp.com, specifically on the document library tab. So that report reflects upon existing conditions for our natural, bill, and community systems with informational narrative, data, and maps. We had a public comment which has been opened through today, so it closed today earlier when I was looking. I think we received about 15 comments from the public, so thank you for those who have submitted comments to date, but the report is still available should you want to review the report. The next meeting for the local comprehensive planning committee will be held Thursday, May 11, at 5:30 here at town hall within the hearing room. At that meeting, the committee will review the comments that were submitted on that draft existing condition report, and they're also currently working to develop a draft vision statement. And that's where they're at right now. Thank you.
That's awesome. Great work, Kate. Great update. Glad to hear it. Moving along to correspondence. We have correspondence this evening for a Chapter 91 notice for 24 Flume Ave, Marson's Mills, Maskevich Pier. And would you like to present some information for us? And I thank you in advance for your patience this evening.
Good evening. Arlene Wilson and Wilson Associates, representing the Metzseviches, who would dearly like to have a pier with a seasonal superstructure at their property at 24 Flume Avenue in Marson's Mills. This property was acquired by the Metzseviches at essentially foreclosure. It had been vacant for years, and I think the neighborhood got used to being able to access the beach at this property. And now that somebody's redeveloping it, they feel as though some of their rights are being taken away, which is part of the neighborhood problem here. The pier is a structure that is 56 feet overall, 48 feet into the water based on last summer's water elevation, which varies several feet at least year to year in the lakes in town. It is 48 feet off the west property line to the viewing platform that's now owned by the Barnstable Land Trust adjacent to the Herring Run, and 92, excuse me, 92 feet off the east property line, which is the next closest residential abutter. The Chapter 91 requires a 25-foot setback unless the neighbors assent to something closer. So this is well within their regulations. The area as the entirety of the pond is mapped by Mass Natural Heritage as rare habitat for several species of freshwater mussels, and so the design has to take into account the least possible disturbance to that resource, and we have to have the least possible disturbance to that resource, and we have to have a certified biologist on-site at the time of construction to sweep the area of those shellfish and then put them back in after construction is over. So, we determined that the least impactful design would be a small helical pile, essentially an oversized screw that goes into the bottom and sits below the surface, and then there's a two-inch post that comes up from that, about 10 inches to 12 inches of which stays above the surface. In the spring, the superstructure from the pier, the pipes that support the pier itself fit over those, and there's a little clamp that goes through them that holds them together. I know that people have expressed some concerns that those pipes are hazard to navigation in the off-season, but they're really no different than the supports for the other licensed piers that are on this pond, which are generally 10 by 10 or an 8 by 12 concrete block that sits on a pipe in the ground, and about 10 inches of that block is above the surface. Those stay in all year round, and the superstructure for those piers then fits onto those blocks. So, six and one and a half dozen of another, we believe. The process here has gotten rather complicated since the department has gone to 100% electronic filings, which drives me insane. I'm a little older. I hate that kind of stuff. But, so every different kind of license has its own format. We are now seeking what's called a simplified license for this. That process requires us to post notice before we can actually file the application. So, you've gotten a copy of those plans, backwards, yes. You've gotten a copy of the plans and a copy of the public notice that's been published in the newspaper. 30 days is allowed for public to comment. Those 30 days have passed. It is not absolutely required for the planning board under this type of a procedure to hold a hearing. You can if you want to, and you are not required to comment to the waterways division, but again, you can if you want to. I know that there's been a lot of public comment. You got a series of letters previously. We've gotten probably four times as many with this application, most of which have a fair amount of misinformation, which is unfortunate. There are actually 13 piers and five miscellaneous structures, boathouses that hang out over the water, decks across the waterfront edge that hang over the water, things like that, on middle pond alone. Of those, we have only been able to find licenses for six, which also is not uncommon for freshwater. A lot of the development people in the 50s and 60s built houses and put out piers. It was before the Conservation Commission. The state has no way to track that stuff. So, in the 90s, there was a procedure that the state hoped would have everybody seeking licenses. Maybe a third of the freshwater stuff got licenses, so. But now, anybody who wants to build a pier has to go through the Conservation Commission first, and so all of the new stuff gets caught. This project has been through the Conservation Commission. They required the pier to be, the 56 feet that you see now, we originally applied for something a little longer with an L. They said no L because the neighbors objected. So, this is a smaller application than originally proposed. The neighbors objected. It went on appeal to DEP. DEP has approved this license. So, with that, I'd be happy to try and answer questions. I know we're all tired.
Yeah, I don't think there's too much to get into on this one. I'd like to make a motion, Jim. Before I do, do you have anything to add?
No, just that, you know, this board doesn't really see too many Chapter 91s that are to be discussed further. I know we've had the applicant here before with a different licensing process, and my understanding is the state adjusted their process, and so that's why this is back before this board with a different role for the planning board. And so, tonight, you know, I think it would be maybe in the board's best interest to pull together the previous comments that were made and provide those, if the board agrees, to the state. I mean, you know, this board doesn't really get into the general review of docks and piers. Obviously, conservation does and has, and has already weighed in and approved, but certainly there's been a lot of, you know, well, maybe some of it's misinformation. I think there was some good public comment that has been provided and could be forwarded along to the state to make sure that it is being reviewed.
Yeah, well said, Jim. I'm of the opinion, unless anyone objects, that this board elects not to make a recommendation. However, it does request that all of the information submitted is forwarded to the Mass DEP. Does anybody object to me making a motion to that effect?
No, I'll second it.
Okay. Well, let me make the official motion. So, I move that the planning board does not provide a recommendation on the Chapter 91 simplified license application, 24 Flume Ave, Marson's Mills, record number 23-WW06-0014-APP, but requests the board submit a letter strongly urging Mass DEP to consider the public comments submitted to the planning board and to attach all public comments received. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
That was Michael. Thank you, Michael. All those in favor? Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a lovely evening. Just a reminder to everyone to keep in touch with Karen about future meetings. You know, we're down to six members, and just as an example, this special permit before us earlier requires five votes, so if we have two members out, we're gonna be in tough shape. So, let's just stay in touch with Karen and do what we can to be in attendance. We are going to look for approval of minutes for April 10, 2023. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you, Bob. And a second?
Just Tim, one second.
Thank you, Tim. All those in favor? Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Future meeting, May 8, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in person, as well as May 22, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. in person. And any further comments before a motion to adjourn?
Is there a workshop this Friday?
Yes. Thank you for the reminder. A workshop for the design guidelines is this Friday, an all-day, but again, if you can make it for either morning or afternoon, that would be greatly appreciated while I'll send out a reminder.
I'm gonna do an after-lunch shift, maybe two to the end. Jim, Wednesday night, 5 o'clock?
Yeah, there's kind of a recap from like 4 to 5. So, that would be a good one.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna do 2 to 5, and if anyone else wants to do the morning or join the recap, highly recommended.
You know, they're threatening to buy lunch, so if you came for the morning, you can probably get lunch for free.
I love it. So, let's mul it over and let Jim, Kate, or Karen know, and let's add to that lunch bill, huh? All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Ray. And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. All those in favor? Ray?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Robichaud, votes aye. Meeting adjourned.